We're live.
All right, everybody, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the City Council of City of Perry, September 1st, 2020, at 5:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Cold Iron. Bond. Dealbeck. Ahern.
Brian.
Ahern.
Here, sorry, here.
Marshall.
Here.
White.
Here.
Morrell. Wines.
Here.
Stroller.
Here. I do declare a quorum this evening. Item one on the agenda is consider approval of resolution number 2020-13, considering funding pursuant to the CARES Act in the Coronavirus Relief Fund, confirming that it is the policy of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, that all public safety personnel costs are substantially dedicated to the COVID-19 response effort of the city throughout the ongoing state of emergency. I don't know that if we have Russ or anyone from his staff available, Bryce or Dixie, do you all know about this?
Yes, I think I can speak to it. The governor determined that the manner in which money's received from the federal government for COVID responses should be done on the basis of population of communities. So what essentially receiving is $77 times our population as a form of a grant. What this resolution does is it says that we're acknowledging that that our public safety departments, that the work that they've done from March 1st until December 31st has been COVID-related and we're identifying that as the, to justify the payments of the dollars from the federal government to us, that is done in conjunction with the state, which authorized to the municipalities, the use of both police, fire, ambulance for that calculation. We certainly have incurred more than that number, but we've got to make applications for the amount that we're authorized for. Dixie may have that number, but it's essentially $77 times our population. And what this resolution does is acknowledges in states, in accordance with, you know, the state policy, that we're acknowledging and saying that our responses that we've made were COVID-related, were related to the COVID pandemic, and that's consistent with what the state said we could do. So that's what it is.
Thank you very much, Bryce. I stepped off a second, was talking to Tyson about something. You may have mentioned this, Russ told me it comes to 300, and I think he said $72,000 for the city. I don't know if you mentioned that.
Yeah, I think that's essentially correct. 77 times 5,000 is, you know, we're 5,200, so it's whatever that number is. It sounds like that is correct.
Okay, thank you, Bryce. We need a motion on that. We need to take that money if the state's going to give it to us.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 2020-13.
Second, Wines.
Roll call, please.
Dealbeck.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you. Item number two is receive a presentation from the Perry Chamber of Commerce concerning the Cherokee Strip Celebration. If Cherokee Strip Celebration does not occur, consider, sorry, efforts on the city chamber agreement. Okay, first of all, you know, we had this discussion at our last council meeting, and there was several council members that agreed, several council members that did not agree. Then, how this came about, there was three council members that thought that we wanted to have this discussion again, and so they signed to have a special meeting. Before we proceed, though, we'll open this up to the floor, and whoever wants to talk about this can talk about this. But there's one item that I personally want to get straight before we move on. And Noel's here, and Lawrence is here. I need both of you two to speak, if you would, please. There's a rumor going around town that I have said I was going to pull your funding, and I've had discussions with both of you to the effect that I was totally against that. So I would like both of you to come forward in my defense, saying that I never told either one of you that.
Absolutely. I'll speak first. This is Lawrence Wortham. I'm the Chair of the Chamber of Commerce. And as Bill said, no, at no time did Bill ever come to us and say, you know, the City of Perry is going to pull our funding if we do not do this event. That was never in discussion. I'm not sure where that came from, but, you know, that's just how gossip goes. When it hits the grapevine, it's wildfire. It goes in many different directions.
Thank you, Lawrence. Noel, if you were going to talk, you're muted. We'll get back to her later. All right, whoever, whoever wants, as a matter of fact, I talked to Lawrence and told him, hey, you know, we're not going to pull your funding. If there's something else you guys can find to dedicate the money to, make a contribution to something, there's many ways to handle that, but I never said that ever. So, all right, Derek Cold Iron and Jamie Wines and Mike Morrell are the three that signed to have this special meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to you. It doesn't even look like, unless I'm mistaken, I don't see Derek even here. So Mike or Jamie, I would prefer that you guys lead this discussion.
This is Jamie. After our city council meeting yesterday and receiving the email as well from the chamber, I do think it's in our best interest that we do talk about this again. You know, we're trying to keep our schools open and people at work, and the limited amount of activity that would be able to go along with the parade anyways, I personally do not think it's a good idea for our community to bring in other folks at this time. I would rather us postpone this until it's safer for our community to have this. I know that it's important for us to, you know, people are looking for outlets and to be able to go do things, but I don't think it's essential to have a parade. And personally, just, I don't think it's a good idea. We're trying to keep our kids in school. You're trying to allow them to do sports. We're trying to keep people at work. And I think it's a risk that we shouldn't take at this time.
I'm going to agree with that, Bill. Sorry, it's Mike Morrell. I've had, not several, but quite a few people contact me, and the town is split on this, right down the middle from what I can gather. People really, really concerned in the older ages that are really shut in, just like everyone else, don't have anything to do, and grandpa and grandma, mom and dad getting out and doing things. I've talked to people that see their parents every single day and their grandparents. And I've also talked to people that haven't seen their parents or their grandparents since February or March. So I know it's boring. I know everyone would like to have normalcy back, but if you just look around, there's not any normalcy anymore. We don't have a normalcy. I'm going to echo Jamie that we're trying to keep the community going. We're trying to keep people jobbed. And right now, it's just not a, I don't feel it's an opportune time to give our blessing to this and say, yeah, there's nothing out there, go for it. I mean, I'm looking at both sides of it. I understand both sides. I really do. But I want to err to the side of judgment and say, let's be safe and let's, let's don't push our luck in this community. Thank you.
I would just also add, I've talked to a lot of people, and none of them are planning on coming either. So there's also a risk that we spend this money, we continue to do this, and we don't have people there. So it may be better just to save our money or to spend it on a time when we can have the turnout and more people in our community can attend these type of festivities. I want to have one just as bad as everybody else. It's just, it's not a risk that I think that we should take when we're, I mean, we're one of the few school districts that are still in school right now, and I'd like to keep it that way.
Jamie, sorry, I'm going to jump in just a little bit. My phone was not letting me dial in, I guess, or you couldn't hear me. But I do want to kind of touch back real quick on what Bill had said. Lawrence covered it. I think it was a rumor that had gone around, but we did not feel that he ever threatened us. I did speak to him directly yesterday, and I think a lot of that was gossip going around from individuals that were not in direct communication with us or with council. But as far as having the event, registration-wise, and this is something that we've seen in neighboring communities, we only have nine registrations currently for the parade. And this was something we felt that the community wanted us to do, but now that we're rolling forward with it, we're not having the participation like what people had said. And so even before we put out our online registration, we did contact 15 registrations that had been in the parade previously, and eight were no's, that they would not come and participate in it, and seven were yeses or maybes. And so we're also seeing a decline in participation at this point as well.
Well, I'll just chime in too. I'll make it very brief, because I spoke last time and I was strongly opposed to having the event, and that has certainly not changed. I say that, I've had a lot of people come in and say they were very grateful for those that, you know, voiced their opinion against having it despite, you know, the tradition and all the things that go with the parade. I think the thing that I would, you know, encourage people to think about really is, if you have an electrical problem at your house, a major electrical problem, you call an electrician, you call an expert, you rely on an expert to guide you through that process. And we can all have our own personal opinions about the pandemic, and this isn't the time or place to go through that. But I always try my best to defer to the experts. This is a medical issue, and I think that we and all people should defer to the medical experts. And I'm quite confident, I believe that Noel even said that. I might be mistaken, and if I am, I'll ask to be corrected. But I believe that Stephen Taylor from the Medical Center is, I believe, on the chamber. And I believe, if I remember right, he, as well as some others, I know the chamber was kind of split down the middle, was vehemently opposed to having this event. Maybe vehemently is a difficult, maybe too strong, but he was certainly not in favor of that event. I agree with Mike. I think we should always err on the side of caution. We cannot let tradition trump public safety. And I personally would much rather be on the side of caution and be mistaken someday. I'm like Jamie, let's keep our schools open if we can, let's keep people working, let's be smart about things, and let's hopefully plan to have it next year and have a great success next year.
And Brian, I believe Stephen is on here. We did ask him to join in on this call. If he, he has sent me some recent updates, if he wouldn't mind, kind of just voicing what he had told us in our board.
Sure. Yes, you know, I mean, anytime you introduce that many potential, that many people into a small environment, your risk is going to go up significantly. And I think it's evidenced by the significant increase that we have seen in Payne County. Now, it's to a much bigger scale, because it's the college students and they're staying here. But, you know, you think about, I think historically, there's been, you know, 10,000 to 14,000 people that have come in for this parade, coming from all, you know, who knows where, you know, the numbers in Garfield County have increased. And, you know, if you weigh the risk, I just don't think the risk is worth it. You know, the numbers for Noble County and Perry, you know, they do go up, but it's at a slow pace and nothing very significant. We wouldn't want this to create an outbreak and the numbers increase like they're seeing in Payne County and Stillwater right now. And so, yes, I would definitely opposed to having an event like this. And be happy to try to answer any questions anybody might have.
Any questions for Stephen? Noel or Lawrence? I see Elaine's on. Thank you, Elaine, for coming this evening.
Well, I have, I have an issue that I think is kind of pertinent. And that is, isn't the rodeo the same weekend? Isn't the rodeo going forward? I was told that, but I don't know.
They are. Oh, sorry.
I've talked to the, I don't know if you call her the president, whatever she is, but, but yes, the rodeo is going forward. They kind of based their decision, and Noel and I had this talk, they based their decision on the chamber, whether or not the parade was going to happen. So that's, that's where we keep double clutching this thing the whole time. You know, yes, we are, no, we aren't, yes, we are, no, we aren't. And so there's other organizations in the community that are, you know, basing their event on this. So as soon as I heard that we're having a special meeting, and we're going to try to talk the chamber out of this, I called the committee. And those, those people have already spent thousands and thousands of dollars on trophy belt buckles and saddles, and they've spent an enormous amount of money. It takes, I think she told me, like $40,000 to put on that rodeo, and they had about 20, a little over $20,000 to try to do it, and they went forward with it. So I'm sure they have dumped their entire amount of money into trying to make this thing work. And so I feel bad for them now.
I have been in contact with Crystal, excuse me, after our last meeting, and even up to this meeting. And we had a very lengthy discussion about the rodeo and about the parade. And what it comes down to, at the very most, participation that they plan to see is on the high end, 1,200 people. And most of their attendance are participants or participant families. And the participants, the reason why they are still planning to move forward with the rodeo is because we were moving forward for tradition, but their decision, because they are part of a rodeo network, and forgive me, because I'm not positive on the, on the verdict, exactly, but the circuit, and their decision to cancel would directly affect people's livelihoods. They are the last rodeo for participants to gain points before they go to the finals. And they don't expect a lot of Perry people. They do expect a lot of outsiders to come in. However, when discussing this, we did decide, or just I encouraged, being a host, that they would need to do everything that they could to keep it safe out there. So if they were having concession, that they were wearing masks and gloves. If they were having participants coming in, they had masks available, they had sanitation available. They were also going to tape off some of the bleachers so they could try to keep the six feet guidelines. But as we know, not everybody follows those. And so they, they knew that going into it, but they were going to try to do everything they could to keep their participants safe. And they are not necessarily directly related with, with us. It is not a city event. They have their own event. The Cherokee Strip Riding Club actually hosts that. And so if we were to have celebration or not, they have made a decision on their own. And so they will still move forward with the rodeo, as far as I know, unless numbers rise or there's something that they are not able to. And just because they feel that, because of the circuit that they are in, and the participants, that the reason for the participants to come, that they should still host the rodeo.
Yeah, I mean, they own the rodeo grounds. We transferred it to them. So it's not like the streets, which we can say whether we want them blocked off or not. I mean, they can host it if they want to host it.
Well, it kind of sounds like to me, Noel, I know you guys have done your work, and Lawrence, and Stephen, and Elaine, you guys, if we're only got nine or 10 entries, it's kind of a mute point in my mind. I don't, I don't see the, the numbers of participants that are willing to come. I am 100% in favor of having it. Because I tell you, I know there's businesses on this square, unlike Brian, and I'm not saying anything negative towards Brian. He's a good friend of mine. I think he's got an outstanding business over there. But there are business owners on this square that really want that event. They want it for their livelihood. And I've talked to three or four of them myself, and I've had them call me. I've had people call me this week and say, you guys are having a special meeting? What's that about? I thought we'd come out the newspaper, we were having a parade. And so, but it doesn't matter whether we're having a parade or not. If we can't get the people to show up to participate in the parade, it's, it's null and void in my mind.
Who are the nine entries that have said that they're coming?
I would have to pull it up on my, I can pull it up, hold on. But I know, off the top of my head, we do have, First Bank is registered. We do have some individual vehicles that are registered, and we have a band that is not Perry High School that is registered. But I do not have that list in front of me. I can look it up for you.
So the Perry Band has not registered yet?
Online, they have not registered yet, no.
Okay, because I know that they are planning on marching, the high school and the junior high.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Derek Cold Iron's trying to get in and cannot. Can someone let him in, please?
Did you get that, Tyson? Tyson's on it.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, guys. I had some work stuff come up.
Do we have, do you think that the one other reason for not having as many entrances, people don't know that they're supposed to do it online, or, or what?
Noel?
Oh, sorry, I lost you for a second.
She's asking if people feel like, she's asking if the low numbers in entries, do you feel like it's because some of the participants don't know to register online?
I think there probably are some. I do have the list here. We have Oak Taha High School Band. We have a couple individuals. We have Branded Cowboy Church, Fancy Dance Casino, and Wheat Heart Grandparents Club. We also have First Bank, Georgia's Fine Furniture, Platinum Real Estate, and the Pride of Sayer High School Marching Band. And some of, we, some of that may be that they have not gotten online. I know there are other businesses who would join, but moving it online may have been something where people are, have not registered yet, or just decline in participation. I really, I couldn't say at this point.
Have you made an effort to, and I'm just asking, have you made an effort to, I know you said you reached, you reached out to some, but I'm assuming you haven't made contact with all the participants from past history, or like the last couple of years or something? The major participants?
We have not reached out to everyone that normally enters. We do have it on all of our social media networks. We send out a constant contact with the information, as well as on our website. And anybody that does call in, we do refer them to our website so that we can keep that number online. But no, we have not gone through the list to call every person that normally participates.
Okay. I do see our Emergency Management Director for the City of Perry, Mr. Brand, is with us this evening. And he is also our Fire Chief. Chief, do you know if the rural fire truck community had plans of participating? I'm assuming you do, because you guys helped lead the parade. But I know that the rural community, all the rural fire departments normally come participate. Have you heard any scuttle from those people, whether they were planning on coming or not?
There were a couple of them that I'd spoke to, but they were not planning on participating this year.
Okay, good. Second thing for you, Russell, if you don't mind, just a second. Do you have any input towards being our Emergency Management Director? You and I talked briefly yesterday. Do you have any input or updates on numbers and the way things are trending for us here in this area?
You know, I mean, I'll echo a little bit what Stephen Taylor did a little bit ago. I mean, we've seen our numbers, you know, increase, we see them decrease. It seems like when we see the cases come up, we see the recovery come up within days, you know, just about to that number. Today, we have, in the Noble County area, we have 107, 88 of those recovered with 17 active cases. And then, you know, I don't know if you want me to go through the five communities and show the numbers, but.
What's our count here in Perry, Russell?
Today, the total was 42 with 34 recovered, so eight active. You know, that's, and that's really, really been my biggest part in this whole thing, is just trying to make sure that I disseminate the information through, through Larry and Dixie, just to make sure that everyone has the information to base those decisions off of.
Is eight's probably about the highest count we've had at one point, isn't it, Russell?
Yeah, I think in the City of Perry, I think, you know, for, for just Perry, I do think eight's probably one of the higher numbers that we've seen.
Last Friday, we had six active cases with a active cases with a total of thirty-nine, thirty-three had recovered, that's as of last Friday.
Right, okay. You know, I, and there, there are so many discrepancies in what gets reported this, uh, these numbers that I, that I've forward on to, to Larry and Dixie come from coronavirus dot health dot okay. Um, but it's through the State Department of Health, um, whatever numbers their epidemiologist posts. Um, that's what gets distributed out to, to each place. So, um, you know, looking at, uh, at the numbers statewide, you know, the governor spoke today actually here in Stillwater and, and it looks like, you know, from a statewide perspective, they're at a one point three-six percent mortality rate with eight hundred and nine deaths, uh, just a little over fifty-nine thousand total cases with nearly fifty thousand of those recovered and, and you know, the, the numbers are, you know, and again, I can, I can just only pass along the numbers that are there. But, um, again, the, the ever hospitalized that the state has reported out of the four thousand nine hundred and three, or out of the total number, the, the number ever hospitalized from, from inception of this virus is four thousand nine hundred and three. So that's about eight point two-five percent hospitalization rate.
Alright, thank you, Russell, appreciate that.
Yes, you bet.
Alright, uh, council and, and, uh, chamber members, uh, rather than just sit here and hash this out all night. Uh, I think this ultimately goes back to a discussion amongst the chamber. And, uh, whichever way you all decide, uh, I've said from the beginning that it's not the city's, uh, position to, uh, make this decision for you. Uh, we can, uh, we want to make sure you guys know how the city feels. And whatever decision you all make, we will stand behind you, uh, one hundred percent. So, uh, does anyone else have any discussion?
Yeah, and I'm sorry I was late, I had some work stuff come up. Um, can I, can I say a couple of things?
You bet.
My, my feelings are a little, little different than what you just delivered in that this is a, a joint effort that we put together because we provide, usually provide electric and, and close the roads and there's big meetings between city staff and county staff, I know, and as well as others to, to get this thing going. So to me, this is a, a joint effort and it's, it's something for the city. And, and I, I, I just believe that, that if we as a council, you know, the main thing is that when we're done here, that we showed a joint effort with them in our decisions instead of, uh, and I know you said that we'd support them when we're done. But I, I want everybody to know that I believe it's a joint effort between us and the chamber and everyone else.
The, the reason I say that Derrick is because the chamber has total control of organizing the event. And yes, we do participate in any way that they ask us to help, but it ultimately is their event.
And we contract them to do that.
I know for the chamber, that is a question that we had in our contract with the, with the city in regards to the twenty thousand dollars that we're, uh, provided from the city. Um, the first item on our scope of work is to plan, promote, advertise and market special events such as the Cherokee Strip Celebration and the Spring Fest in April. And so from the, from the council, uh, some of the clarity that we were hoping to get from the city council is, you know, is this, you know, a chamber event and, or is this a, a community event, is this a city event? If it's a chamber event, then, you know, in our contract, does that need to be stated that, that we are contracted to plan and promote this event for the city? Perhaps we should talk about that.
I think, uh, well, I think it is a, I think it is a chamber event. Uh, but we do contract, uh, for this event. And, uh, in order for you to have the event, uh, we have to block off our streets. And so, you know, our active participation, uh, you know, is, is required i- in many communities. Uh, the way they do it is, uh, where, where they don't provide, necessarily provide funds. Uh, the, the, the community's, uh, uh, action is to provide for the, uh, the blocking of the streets, which is really, you know, what we're doing. So, I mean, I suppose, uh, you know, since this is a parade, i- if, if the council wanted to get involved, uh, you know, they could do two things. One, uh, we, we, uh, do not agree to block the streets. Uh, number two, uh, with respect to the contract, although that's in the contract. Uh, you know, this is an extraordinary event, COVID nineteen extraordinary event. Uh, the chamber has counted on these dollars. Sure, they were going to expend some of these dollars on the event. The chamber does many other things for the community and, and we're not going to hold it against, uh, the chamber. Uh, if, if this event doesn't occur, that just gives you some ideas of, of, uh, of the city's, uh, the city's role in this. Uh, you know, this COVID nineteen is the kind of thing that, uh, force majeure clause, uh, which may or may not be in the contract. Um, I mean, you know, uh, it's being called all over the, uh, the country. Why, uh, why mortgage lenders are saying, please call in if you can't make your payment is that, uh, no one expected this kind of event. It only occurs once every hundred years and, 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 you know, is like to an act of God. So, uh, I mean, those are, if, if that gave you a couple of ideas, if someone wants to make a motion, but, you know, I would say that it's a chamber event, we certainly contracted, asked them to have it. But, uh, we have a role too.
So, I mean, we could give a recommendation, right?
Oh yeah, absolutely, give a recommendation right up to the fact that you're not going to, uh, you're not going to block off the streets. I mean, not blocking, not blocking the streets stops a parade, you know?
Hang on Bryce, Elaine, go ahead.
Sorry, I've, I've, I don't mean to, to cut in, I'm Elaine Zanotti, I serve on the chamber board. And, um, I think every city that has an annual event all across the United States is dealing with the same issue when it comes to trying to figure out whether or not it's safe. Um, and a good idea to host a large event in their community. So I, I don't envy any of us sitting in this spot because it, we're not going to make everybody happy no matter what decision we make. Um, I think we have, as a board, chamber board, we have tried to do our due diligence in thinking about, um, what this, um, celebration event means to the city of Perry, um, what it means, um, to the heartstrings as well as what it means to businesses who plan on this for their livelihood. Um, I think where I'm coming at it from now is, is if it wasn't a chamber and a city co-event, so to speak. Um, if a large event wanted to happen in the city of Perry, um, you know, would we feel safe and knowing that that's, that's the right decision to make? Um, the chamber board feels very strongly that we want to ensure that every event that we put on representing the city of Perry is going to keep everyone safe. And I think when we made the decision to move forward with it, we had done our due diligence in talking with the hospital, with city officials. We really tried to, and with people who had participated past, um, in celebration. And we wanted to ensure that we were touching base with everybody who had, um, a, a part in this. And, um, you know, the tough thing about this pandemic is it's very fluid. Um, what's happening today is going to be maybe different, that's happening a week from now, we don't know the answer to that. I'm hearing on this, on this certain call that we have a lot of people who are questioning whether or not we should do this. And I think what the chamber wants really is the city officials to say to us, you know what? As, as the leaders of this city, we're not sure this is the best idea to do, or yes, we want you to, you know, yes, we, we are behind it, we'll support it. I think we're just looking for some guidance from you guys as city officials overall to let us know what it is that you would like for us to do. And I don't know if that's a motion to, you know, for us to, to not do it, or if it's a motion just to say, you know what, where, you know, a- as of this point, the city of Perry doesn't feel comfortable hosting an event this large, um, so.
Elaine, thank you for those words, appreciate it.
Uh, so I haven't spoken yet, which is kind of odd when it comes to this. Um, I'm, you know, I've always said that I was kind of at a, I was kind of torn in between, but, um, I, I can tell you this, I've had one person that asked me about, you know, whether we should go ahead and do the mask issue with it. Um, you know, and, and that was it. I haven't had anyone else say anything. Uh, everybody else has actually asked me, you know, they said, well, if we're not actually having the celebration, then why are we having the celebration? And I'm getting that more than anything, um, because it's just not what they're used to. And that's not, that's nobody's fault. I mean, this is, these are things that have happened and we can't help them. Um, but, uh, I'm getting that more than anything is if we can't have the full celebration, then why are we even having it? Um, and I agree with everybody that said, you know, it's fifty-fifty and there's, there's, there is no right answer. There, you're going to have half the people mad and half the people not. And there's no way to get around that, no matter what our decision is. Um, but that's what I'm hearing the most. Um, I myself get torn about it, but I can't look at that right now because, uh, as a, as a musician, I actually go to all these different things and they're starting to open up and I'm starting to get my work back. Uh, but as far as what the city is saying and as far as what the citizens are saying, they, they're saying, why are we having it if we can't have the full thing?
Thank you, Curtis.
Okay, it's my turn, I guess, last but not least. Um, I want to mimic what Curtis said. Mainly what I've been hearing is we're going to be disappointed whether we have it or we don't. If we're cutting out some events that people are used to, depending on who those people are, they're going to be disappointed. So there is no right answer in this. If we choose to have it, as a council member, I will go downtown and I will participate. If we choose not to, I will support that as well. So I don't know if that really helps in your decision in making it, uh, Noel and Lawrence and Elaine, but, um, those are the comments that I've been getting around town.
I too have had bo- both sides, uh, I will say in my cases, most have been strongly against. But I have had, uh, one or two people now talk to me about wanting to have it and, and I appreciate both sides. Um, but I do think I would like to make a motion to postpone it until further notice. And, um, continue the conversation later.
Well, I don't know, uh, how you would postpone that. Uh, Noel, uh, would you just rather, I mean, to me, it's going to be called cancel and not postpone. I don't know how you'd postpone it.
I, I agree, I think it either needs to be canceled or moved forward. Um, I think we could have an effort to try to make our Spring Fest event a larger event. Um, possibly have a parade or something, um, similar to what they're used to. But, um, kind of like what the council is saying is that the public are expecting everything for this event. And even though we did try to make, um, people happy by doing, following the tradition of the parade, I still think there is a lot of grumbling, um, for not having the entire event. And so I agree, I think it would be better if we could have guidance of either having the event or not. Whether it's the parade, um, I really don't think that, um, I know our chamber board is not going to go back on the decision to try to have the entire event. Um, we were split as it was to host the parade. Um, but I think we would need, th- there isn't a way to postpone this event. I think it would either be canceled or, um, or move forward with the decision that was made.
And I, I think that's where my, my motion was meant to be in that we have further discussion later about how, how we either do, like you said, Spring Fest or something, something to that effect, uh, with a parade to, to give people the same experience when it's safer.
Yeah, whether it be for health reasons or whether it be that people don't want to have it if they don't want to have the full thing, that's still both sides. I mean, I mean, what we're hearing the most is why have it? So, I mean, I think that's what I'm in favor of is just why have it if, if we don't need to? And then we can actually err in the side of caution and actually just let people know that, you know, maybe we shouldn't have it because we really can't have the full thing and it's not what you people are going to be expecting.
Well, I, I believe personally that, uh, we've, we've beat this thing down the road so far, there's no way to have the event now. Uh, I don't know how Noel would ever pull this together in two and a half weeks. I just, it's, it's impossible. So, uh, Derek, Derek made a, a motion. Uh, Derek, would you restate your motion, please?
Would you like me to change it?
Yes, I would. I would like for you not to say postpone.
Okay, I, I will make a motion to recommend to the chamber that we cancel the event. And just have further discussion later about things that we could do to, um, benefit the businesses in the community.
And Derek, Derek, would you add that, that we're not going to, uh, that we're not going to affect the contract at this point? The, the, the contract remains as it is and we will, yeah, financially, we elected to cancel it. So, uh, we don't hold that against them, the funding stays the way it is. I mean, would, would that be appropriate? Because we do have it addressed on the agenda, I just want to make sure everyone knows that piece of it. So there's no issue, uh, remaining untied.
I would like to add Bryce's comments as well, that we will not amend the, the contract or affect the contract at all.
Second, second, wines.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Hold on.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
No.
White.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
No. Alright, uh, chamber members, uh, there's been a recommendation passed. And, uh, you can take that with you to your board and, uh, make whatever decision that you feel comfortable knowing that we as a council do support you.
Thank you, that was something that we were looking at. What we're, what we were wanting to do with the council again was to just kind of show a unified effort that, that the chamber and the council is working together. Um, you know, we could avoid gossip and things like that, but we can work directly together, not have miscommunication. Um, and just really show the community that, that we support one another moving forward with our events that we have.
Thank you, Lawrence. Uh, I had a discussion, uh, I believe it was with Noel yesterday. And I know that Danette and I, uh, were opposed to the recommendation. But I assured her that we as a council, regardless of how the voting comes out, we all unify and go the same direction. And, uh, that's very important for them to know.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep, uh, item three, motion on the adjournment?
Push into adjourn.
Second.
Roll call please.
Cold iron.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stoller.
Yes, thank you.